The purpose of our public schools is established in our constitution, and it is to diffuse generally the knowledge needed to preserve the liberties and rights of the people. Texas law also requires the teaching of informed American patriotism, including the founding documents of the United States. Our children should marvel at our accomplishments, including the American Revolution, the end of slavery, victory in world wars, in the Cold War, and the civil rights movement. Our students must know the rarity of stable, popular self-government and the great value of it. But the wonder must be sober. Our children must know the failures of our political ancestors. If our ancestors were perfect, we cannot profit from them, for we are not perfect. But if they failed, then they are like us, for we too fail, sometimes egregiously. But if we fail like them, then perhaps we can succeed like them. With these goals in mind, the workgroup drafts fall far below expectations. This is especially concerning because 75% of the workgroup members currently work in school districts. The drafts are another example of our schools' strain into ideology and thereby decreasing the quality of instruction. It is unfortunate that the work of district members that are faithful and good educators is being overshadowed by these drafts. For these reasons, the Texas Public Policy Foundation recommends that, if you do move forward, substantial cleanup of these drafts is needed. But the amendments will not address the concern that the workgroups are simply not aiming at the goals established by the Texas Constitution and by state law. They have said as much today. Their goals are to increase inclusivity and to decrease Eurocentric content. We must refocus on the proper goals of public education and take a sober view of our history.
Thank you.
Christopher Carmona?
Good morning. My name is Christopher Carmona. I am a professor of Mexican-American Studies at the Our Lady of the Lake University in San Antonio. I'm also the former chair of the National Association of Chicano and Chicano Studies to House Foco Committee on Mexican-American Studies and Pre-K through 12 education. Today, though, I'm speaking on behalf of all Texas students in our schools, as well as those former students. I have fought for education in Texas for well over a decade now, and I've seen the work that this board can do. I'm a product of the school system, and I've succeeded to receive my PhD and become a professor. When I was a student, I did not understand the importance of learning history and seeing myself reflected until much later. Ever since, though, I was able to, though, I've dedicated my life to educating these students, to educating students, and to advocate for an inclusive history. Currently, we're facing a changing landscape for education. And for our students who make up the best and the brightest we have to offer, we have to embrace the truth of education. Learning is change. Everyone who learns something is changed by it. This is what we do as educators, help to facilitate life, excuse me, the changes for the betterment of our society. And for this reason, I'm asking for an honest, truthful, and inclusive curriculum that accurately represents the experiences of the diverse communities in Texas. We need to do all we can to make this curriculum part of our everyday experience. We need to honor the countless hours that were donated to Texas students and to the school system by the educators and the experts who worked to put together these teacs. Educators that are obviously currently confused about what's going to happen in the future. Just what I call for is really the passage or getting the first reading done as soon as possible so that we can get these teacs approved and so the students can get the education that they deserve. Thank you all.
Dr. Lawrence Scott?
Test one, two, okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you all for having me here. I have hope, I have hope. About two years ago, I was celebrating. And again, I don't come as, you know, social studies, I was a former social studies teacher. I was an administrator and a curriculum writer. And I've also helped write the African-American Studies course under the tutelage of a member, Madi Cepedes, and of course, Ayesha Davis. And we were celebrating about two years ago, the passage, because I was finally seeing, you know, we had a room full of students and parents and teachers excited about the prospect of us finally having a curriculum that is reflective of experiences of our students. And now we can have cogent and real conversations about our history with accurate data, right? And then SB3 happened. And then now we were asked to assemble all over the state experts to help us unravel how we're going to navigate teaching accurate social studies through SB3. Now, my thing is, is, I mean, some would consider me an expert. You know, I went from homelessness and homelessness to the hallways of higher education. I got a PhD. But if my, like Dr. Martinez was saying, if my son's, if my son's arm breaks, I'm not going to take him to, you know, a car dealer. I'm going to take him to a doctor. I'm going to take him to an expert. And so you assemble experts to do this, and now we're usurping the power of experts under the guise of, we just have to, you know, trash it. What we're saying is, okay, let's bring in experts. Everyone has an opportunity to sign up, and then let's unravel this together. Again, I have hope. We need to honor the countless hours of the people that donated their time. Educators are currently confused, and I feel like we can help that confusion. Lastly, my pastor, Paskey, says, "Success is measured in succession, where your kids, 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 grandkids will feel the impact that we're making today." So I ask you, what kind of America do we want to have our kids live in? Do we want to have America that's complete and replete with the idea that we can have cogent, critical conversations and move forward together in unison or not? Thank you.
That's four, correct? All right, if you can have these four come up. Is there any questions for this group? Mr. Hickman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Michael Barba had a question for you. We're now, we're now in the afternoon, so good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So thank you for your, for your writing here, your treatise. So let me start with the existing teacs. And you put a bunch of teacs in the back, and you put comments and kind of broke it down. So is your view that the existing teacs are perfect and we should stay with those? Or is there things we need to change in the existing teacs?
There's always improvements that can be made. Our focus was, within this document, entirely on the high school drafts of the workgroups A and C in order to pull illustrative examples to help guide the board and give you all some inputs for your thinking that are obviously non-binding.
Okay. And then the other follow-up is if you've read the work, all the workgroups, are you saying we should throw all that in the trash? Or are you saying there's good things in there that could be used to improve?
I think there is a lot of good that can be salvaged. But as I mentioned in my remarks, the overall goal is not aligned with our Constitution and informed American patriotism, which is required by law in a lot of these teacs. And because of that, the revisions would be substantial. They could be done for some courses. For others, like US, like not US, but world history, which starts at 1,200, I don't see how you amend your way to a course that works for high school kids. It gives them no understanding of Greco-Roman political history, which is what our nation was founded on. The founding fathers mentioned that over and over in our primary texts.
Okay. No, understood. Thank you. And I have one other different, can I keep going? Dr. Scott, question for you, sir. I was surprised in African-American, help me understand here, and I learn a lot at every one of these meetings, so please educate me.
Yes, sir.
It talks about Egypt. So is it the history of the continent of Africa? I think of Egypt as part of the Middle East. I don't think of them as African-Americans. If an Egyptian is here, can you help me kind of clarify African-American, Egypt, how Morocco, Algeria, Libya, Tunisia, Egypt fits into the bigger African continent?
Right. So I would not, you know, I would definitely defer to historians for that answer. But in my superficial answer, I would say that African-American history started before 1619. It started before African slaves were enslaved here in America. And that's what we're saying. When our students, listen, this is the thing. When our students figure out, and in the studies, there's so many longitudinal studies. I know people have derived the studies today. But when you look at the studies, when students see themselves reflected in a positive light, because all we know is that we've been enslaved for 345 years. We don't know about Black Wall Street. I mean, people are just learning about the wonderful contributions that we made. So when we know that in Africa, we were kings and queens, and we had, you know, lots of resources, and we had a stable economy, and we had, you know, mathematical calculations and pyramids, then students say, man, I can be better, I can do better. I am more than just the enslavement that I see in my history books today.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Dr. Scott, for being here. So a question for you. You know, I know that you were a former social studies educator. So you have deep content knowledge regarding the standards that we have, the standards we're working to improve right now.
Yes.
With that, with that understanding, with that experience, going into a classroom today and understanding that if we delay approval of this, of these new standards, how much is being missed in a classroom based on what you know of the current standards versus what could potentially be with the new standards?
Right now, unfortunately, we can't wait another second. I go into classrooms all the time, and I deal with teachers and administrators and educators. And they're just, with SB3, everything's convoluted. They literally don't know any, they don't know what to teach. They're afraid to teach anything regarding slavery or anything regarding post-Civil War or anything regarding civil rights or anything regarding, you know, I know this is a bad word, but equity, a lot of circles, equity. But my contention is, I feel like we can't, our students can't wait another minute because our students, they're, what's happening, State Board, if I may, is they're learning on TikTok. They're learning on YouTube because essentially they feel like they're not getting the information that they need in the classroom. And what we're saying is, let's make sure that we get the right information. Let's get it timely. I know we have a December 31 deadline. Let's get it in there timely. Let's work, like the gentleman said, let's work together, all right? So that we can make those revisions and changes together, continue to make those revisions and changes through the hearings and testimonies and meetings. And then let's, you know, get the accurate, comprehensive social studies out so that students can have these critical coaching conversations and not be relegated to social media. I feel like I'm in the principal's office.
Ms. Hardy, hold on just a second. I've actually called on Dr. Johnson. Dr. Johnson and Ms. Hardy.
I was quickly reviewing this treatise that you said that you gave us. And a lot of the deficiencies that you have highlighted here are misleading or harmful omissions. I was kind of alluding to that earlier. We're talking about American exceptionalism. Give me a couple of, without going through this whole chart, a couple of areas you're talking about harmful omissions. And there is, are the misleading things, are they stated incorrectly or they come from a slanted view? What is your opinion there?
Sure. So we distinguish the different improvements that we recommend based off of whether or not they were an omission or a misleading or harmful error. So with regard to American exceptionalism, there's three separate things that we think are harmful to students' understanding of both our greatness and also our failures. One is that the draft documents talk about immigration from Europe as uniquely noxious and harmful while discussing other immigration events only in a positive light. Second, they don't discuss the partial successes of antebellum America to remove slavery. So there were, in antebellum America, there was the abolition of the slave trade. Well, let me, sorry. The immediate or gradual emancipation affected in seven of the 13 original states, the banning of slavery from all the federally owned territories in 1787 through the Northwest Ordinance, the banning of slavery in most of the federal territories by the Missouri Compromise, the prohibition of slavery in most of the states admitted after independence. And third, there is no discussion of the slave trade before the transatlantic slave trade. These problems that we have in our society that we, that give us so much anxiety and sadden our hearts are not unique to America. They're not unique to Europe. They are perennial problems. And if we can understand how the founding fathers, how our political ancestors struggled with them, sometimes succeeded and sometimes failed, we can learn from that. And that can benefit our children. But we must understand that greatness as well as the failures. That is where we find American exceptionalism.
Thank you.
Lawrence Scott? I was curious. You said that the teachers, in regard to slavery, do not get to teach it because of something in SB3. Can you explain that to me, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, Michael, okay. So teachers, right now, they have to teach from both sides. They can't give deference to either side. So when you're talking about issues of slavery or the Holocaust, we saw what happened, I think it was in South Lake. When you describe, when you talk about these issues of race, particularly teachers that are teaching to predominantly, you know, students of color. They, and again, I'm talking about my, you know, teachers that, you know, that are white. And they feel a little uneasy about what they can say and what they can't say. They feel a little uneasy. But prior to SB3, they were able to teach with liberty, and they were able to teach the teacs. So again, you know, we're talking about slavery. We're talking about Reconstruction. So we're talking about black codes after, you know, we're talking about 100 years of lynchings and things like that in American history. They feel like they can't really discuss this in detail without giving both sides, and then giving both sides, America has, no, I'm just saying that that's why it's convoluted.
That's, that was never the intent. And I think that we had Brian Hughes here, Senator Hughes, the other day, speak to the group, and he clarified that, that certainly, I think one of our members said, how can you take a positive out of a school shooting? You can't. And there are some things like the Holocaust and like slavery, of which there are no positives.
Right.
And, and that's the way teachers ought to look at it and not be hemmed in by such a ridiculous thing that you couldn't talk about slavery as being bad or you couldn't talk about the Holocaust as being bad. And, and I think that was an unfortunate thing said by the person in South Lake, but it was not intended to be that way. So I think that, that I, I was just curious. You said that Senate Bill 3 kept them from doing a good job of teaching truth and fact and things that happen in history. And I'm here to tell you, it does not. It's an interpretation that is very warped that would say otherwise.
Right. If we can mediate that back on the ground to the teachers, that's what I'm saying. The problem is, everyone here, we're privy to this information. How do we get this information back in the classroom to the classroom teachers? Because right now, I have principals that have so many vacancies because teachers don't want to come back because of issues like this. And that's what we're saying.
Well, that's unfortunate, but that is a very poor job of administrating if they can't, if they don't get that over to their teachers.
We have to do, all of us have to do a better job. All of us as leaders and community folks and parents, we all have to do a better job of communicating. And I think that's the issue, is we have this huge chasm. And I don't want to talk about why, but we have this huge chasm. And if we can come together, all right, come together, find some of the common grounds and the commonalities, I know that we can get this right, and that's what I'm saying. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I have a question for the, Michael Barba? So thank you for the recommendations. I'm looking through them. And as someone said before, a lot of the deficiencies that you guys mentioned, where they were harmful, false, or misleading. Like, for example, you say, we shouldn't refer to American Indians as indigenous because this creates a false statement of hereditary or racial superiority. Can you talk a little bit more about how referring to American Indians as indigenous would give them superiority racially?
Sure. So we recommend replacing the word indigenous in the drafts with American Indian, both in the section you mentioned and then throughout the teacs. It's mentioned, I think, about 20 times in the K-8 teacs. The ones that we have here are just high school.
Right. But I'm asking you, why, why does that create a sense of racial superiority?
Sure. So the drafts use indigenous. The laws of America and the state of Texas refer to this group of people as Indians or American Indians. They were not a species that are indigenous to the soil of our republic, nor is anyone else, to the best of our current knowledge. American Indians were the descendants of those migrants who came to the Western Hemisphere sometime before significant European migration began in the 16th century. So I hope that sheds a little bit of light on our recommendation there.
That's just telling me who got here at a timeline. That's not telling me why it's superior. So I'm just trying to ask you, why does that imply superiority when you refer to indigenous? You just told me about a timeline. I'm just trying to figure out why indigenous would equate to superiority.
Well, it implies a primary claim upon the land on which we stand. So what it does is it fosters animosity and division among the people. And what's more, the drafts should implement what the people have established through our laws and through our constitution. Our recommendation is that the State Board not conflict with or contradict what is currently established in state law.
So what group, should we refer to as being indigenous, then?
Our recommendation is to remove that word and replace it with American Indian in the drafts.
Okay. Well, have y'all ever talked about, well, who do y'all believe was indigenous?
Our recommendation is to remove it entirely. That's, that's.
So we, we're not going to say who actually is indigenous? We're just going to say nobody was indigenous? We all came here at the same time or something?
No. I mean, I think what you do is you look at social science, and you try and understand the migration patterns of people throughout the world. But you can always go back and back and back farther to establish that at one point in time, the people that are present are indigenous and therefore have the primary and just claim on the land is distinct from, I will point out, distinct from what is established in the state law and constitution.
Thank you. And then you also talked about slavery. I actually agree with you on something. There was slavery around the world, and I, you know, we do talk about that. But if we want to talk about more about how slavery was in places other than America, we have to talk about how it was distinguishably different. So can you talk about other countries or other societies that used a form of chattel slavery, where a person belonged to somebody throughout generations? They had no way of becoming free until they, some sort of policy passed, a form of slavery where people were beaten, raped, torn apart from their families, you know, to never be reunited. Can you tell me about a society that treated people as harshly as what was done here in America?
I think one of the things that I'm encouraged by is the preface to this statement, which is that we do agree on this. I think that there is, we need to take a sober look at that time in our history. And I think that the teacs don't do enough to do that. If you look at the standard as it's drafted there, it says that slavery was a failing of the US government. That's not sufficient. Slavery was not just a failure of the US government. It was a failure of the state governments, of the territorial governments. It was a failure of we, the people. And if we do not understand that it was a failure of we, the people, then we cannot understand the full gravity of that evil. And I think that that is what is important to convey to our students. So I would need to come back to you on examples of other governments or other nations. But I want to reach out and say, I completely agree with you on the gravity of the offense of that evil. And I think that that is why we are recommending that that teac be strengthened.
Okay. So, so, and I want to make sure I got this right. So you're suggesting, in order to strengthen that, we should talk about how, you know, it was the fault of more than just the federal government, also the state governments as well?
And we, the people. I would emphasize that. One of the things that is most important in the education that we pass on to our children is to teach them to love our nation, to understand its failings. If we teach them to love our nation, we build affection for each other, and we're able to stand side by side and tackle any challenge together. If we understand our failures, our past failures, we can also understand, that gives us courage, right? Because we can say, we can do better than they did. But it should also make us more moderate than we have been lately because we understand that the people that walked before us failed. And that should give us a moment of pause when we charge in so boldly.
Thank you.
Dr. Bill Mitterer?
Yes. On this issue of sort of implied, I'd like to continue with Mr. Barba. Sorry. I was thinking about my question, not noticing you were walking away. Yes, the, a number of the areas that you have here use the word like the text suggests. Or you, you mentioned the idea that saying indigenous implies that that means that they have more rights. And I'd like to emphasize the idea that in social studies and history, real scholars and people who understand history are trying to remove that idea of this implies or this suggests or, and also even the idea that the main thing we have to teach our children is to love the country in the school. We have to teach them that. And I, I think that if we're teaching history, we really have to say, try to, try to stand back and figure out what the facts are. Don't, don't focus so much on your feelings. And the idea of trying to make children feel a certain way is almost one of the things that SB3 says we're not supposed to do. Don't try to make students feel guilty for being one gender or one race or another. And I think that is a good idea. Kids are going to have the feelings they have. But for example, here, you look at the past, on Appendix Page Six, you criticize, or your organization criticizes the sociology, where it says, "Explain how nature and socialization inform gender roles and norms and the ways in which such roles and norms foster various equalities and inequalities, including economic and political." Your interpretation of this is, the text suggests that all gender roles and norms result in unjust inequalities. I don't read that that way at all because it says, "Foster various equalities and inequalities." In other words, that is asking students to look at something and analyze it, see the equalities, see the inequalities. But you're assuming that somehow this is suggesting something else. So I would like to ask you to address this idea of, we have to teach exceptionalism, meaning we're the best and you have to love this country. Now, I love this country. I love my family. Oh, yeah, I love all kinds of things. But in, in terms of analysis and history, we're really trying to get students to say, try to put your feelings to one side and figure out what, how can we determine facts?
Yes. I think one of the things that I would recommend is that, so the purpose of education, I'll just start with this, is establishing the Constitution and law. We have to keep in mind that we're not primarily trying to produce or graduate students to become social scientists, but to become productive citizens of our society. That doesn't directly address your point. What does is that if we look at the draft, the fourth column explains what's currently drafted in the teacs. And that just focuses on how gender influences result in inequalities. There is no balance there. If you move two columns to the right, our recommendation is to do exactly what you have mentioned, which is to examine both equalities and inequalities. So this is just another example of how we need to take a more balanced approach than what the draft currently provides.
You follow up? Follow-up questions?
Yeah. The follow-up question is, this does not establish where the inequalities lie. Women aren't drafted. That's an inequality. Women earn lower pay. That's, that's on average. That's a fact. So I, I'm not sure that the way that is written is, is really... How is, how, how is it saying that, that socialization and gender influences encourage equalities?
Our recommendation is to allow a conversation on both of those sides, which is what I think that you were advocating for a moment ago, right? So as it's drafted, the only focus is on inequalities that arise through gender, through gender roles and norms. We are recommending that there is a discussion of both equalities and inequalities, including economic and political. We're not advocating to strike the conversations that you discussed. We're only advocating that it be balanced between both.
Balanced, meaning equal?
Balanced, meaning that teachers are not restricted in being able to point out that there are inequalities as well as equalities that arise as a result of gender influences.
I would suggest that you try to word that in a way that's saying the relationship between the two rather than trying to choose one or the other.
I agree with you that the wording for that category could be improved.
I'm saying that the wording could indeed be improved, but I'm not sure that your revision actually improves it.
Any further questions? Any further questions? Okay, I've got Dr. Robinson and Ms. Perez Diaz.
If Dr. Lawrence Scott could come back up here. Yeah, you're, you're a fan favorite. Yeah, there's been an enormous amount of misinformation, going back several months at least, if not longer, about what critical race theory is. And it's become a, the definition by some people has become very broad. There are some, some people running for office that are campaigning that critical race theory is rampant throughout almost the entire state of Texas. Now, it's my understanding that, that what it is specifically, it, it talks about and alleges that there is systemic racism in our law enforcement, our judicial system, in our institutions. And so, if, if a teacher was teaching that, they would be teaching those three themes specifically in a classroom. Is that, am I correct? Is that the, roughly the definition of actual critical race theory or?
Not, not quite. Critical race theory has five and now six components to it. And I don't want to go through the iteration of the components. But in a general sense, it was, it was meant to address, through the law school sector, it came out of law school, and they were saying, why is it that after the civil rights, there's persistence of, you know, inequalities? So, let's use research to ascertain. So, for instance, I, I did a critical race theory piece, journal article, and we looked at disproportionality of discipline practices for black boys. Black boys are three to four times likely to be disciplined for the same infraction as white boys. Well, we're trying to figure out, even as administrator, I was disagreeing with my data and I saw, I was suspending my black boys at disproportionate rates. So, I would use critical race theory as a theoretical framework, right? Not, it's a theoretical framework you use in research to understand, does race or biases play a factor in my decision making when I'm suspending a kid? And I saw it probably did. And so, that's what critical race theory would try to do. I would, I would ask everyone to go look at the five to six components of critical race theory and then understand, it is a very comprehensive, robust, very, very, you know, difficult thing to just ascertain in, in, in five seconds or a soundbite. It's six, there's six major components. And I would ask everyone to look those up each. And then, probably the biggest component that everyone was talking about is the counter narrative or counter storytelling. Counter storytelling is simply telling the story from those who are traditionally disempowered. And then, that's when you get into, now, we're looking at history from the voices of the slaves, the voices of the decimated indigenous, of indigenous, native, native. The voices, like, you're now, you're now telling the story from the, the perspective of those who are marginalized. And that, that's probably what people are talking about, the counter narrative or counter storytelling part of critical race theory.
Well, do you think that critical race theory is being taught in a large percentage of our schools statewide?
I do not. I do not. I think people are trying to teach diversity, equity, inclusion, and they've conflated diversity, equity, inclusion into a really broader theoretical framework called critical race theory. Again, critical theory, critical thought, critical race theory, quant crit, all those things are high level, doctoral level theoretical frameworks you use. A theoretical framework like Albert Mendu and social learning theory. So, if I say mentorship and I say, well, that's social learning theory. Well, that's a part of social learning theory, but that's not social learning theory. I'm not teaching social learning theory in class because I have a mentorship program. You see what I mean? So, we can't conflate the two. And I think, and I, I know the person personally who came up with this idea at Manhattan Institute, and I've, you know, anyway, yeah. I, I know, I know what happened. Another political, the political reason. Listen, I have no dog in the fight. I'm not, I'm, I'm very apolitical. I, I'm on both sides. I, I build bridges. So, my argument has always been, I can't build bridges if we're conflating, you know, theoretical framework with DEI stuff. I, I can't build bridges. I can't help, help our students be educated so that they can be active community leaders in their community if we're conflating critical race theory with diversity, equity, inclusion.
Thank you, Chairman. So, I think I'm going to bring up Michael again really quickly. Want to ask you a couple of questions. So, again, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to the idea of exceptionalism and how we approach that. We all know that SB three speaks specifically to not using subjective language. Exceptionalism, by definition, suggests that America's exceptional. And so, perhaps, do you think that it would be more acceptable to perhaps have a conversation about, or perhaps allow students to debate the idea of, of what is, like, who defines exceptionalism? And what does that look like? As opposed to naming exceptionalism as the route we have to go? And then, coupled with that, could we, could we also then, rather than, rather than discounting indigenous or indigeneity, which I'm going to ask a question of another panelist in a minute to define. But perhaps we can define, or actually, not define, but allow students to debate the idea of, you know, whether or not someone actually has primary claim to a land, right? Because one of the, several of the really important skillsets in history is about building arguments, using credible sources, and, and then being able to use, again, using sources to construct an argument that perhaps you don't land on a solid, you know, you don't have a solid solution. But that's the point, right? The skillset is to allow for those arguments to be conducted. And so, without discrediting indigeneity and, and the title of indigenous, right? Perhaps, I, I guess I'm wanting to understand, would approaching it in this way then allow students to debate? And it's not then use of subjective language as we approach these standards?
Thank you for the question. So, on the first question about whether we need to teach America, American exceptionalism to our students or whether or not we can leave it an open question, I think one of the things that will help guide an answer to that that I would offer to you are some of the writings of the founding fathers or the writings of Abraham Lincoln. So, Lincoln said, "Upon the subject of education, I can only say that I view it as the most important subject." Jefferson said the same. "Which we, as a people, can be engaged in. That every man may receive at least a moderate education and thereby be enabled to read the histories of his own and other countries, by which he may duly appreciate the value of our free institutions. This appears to me to be an object of vital importance." We need, in other words, to hand on to our children a love of our nation, a love of the principals and who we are at our best, a commitment to liberty and to equality. We cannot leave that an open question, or we will not have a nation in the future.
So, I guess the question that I have as a follow up is, so, for those students who experience education differently than the ideal that you're presenting, how, how then do we build a love for country when a country has ignored their histories or those experiences? There, that, that's a missing piece to this puzzle. And, and, and part of that, those stories are that America hasn't always been exceptional, right? And so, we have to acknowledge that, which is why perhaps debating who identifies or who, who defines what exceptionalism is is the route to go in these conversations. Because then, again, you're not just engaging in conversations about exceptionalism, but you're also challenging students to think critically. And when I say think critically, I'm not talking CRT. I'm thinking actually using, you know, logic and construction of argument to address these, these issues.
I understand. And I think the example you gave in your initial question about the use of indigenous could be an example of, of what you're discussing right now. People who don't always feel like their education reflects, is reflected in the textbooks they read or the lessons they hear. Would that be a fair assessment? Like, those, those people may not be included. I think that that's, what I would point out is that there can be debate about laws that are just or unjust, right? We should have a discussion about that because that helps our children understand how to pursue justice and how to avoid injustice, right? And I think that what I'm recommending today is that love of country, but that that marvel, that marvelous wonder also be sober. And I think if you do both and you keep both goals in sight, then you can provide a path forward, especially for those children who, who come from communities that historically have been marginalized or have, have been the victims of injustice, as we just mentioned. So, the, the victims of slavery, for example.
I appreciate that.
But that is distinct from the use of indigenous, which establishes a primary claim on the land by people at a certain point in time.